Evening, everyone, and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, January 29th, 2018. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." (Singing) "Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have an adoption, a motion for the adoption of those January 15th minutes? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I remove that council approved the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, January 15th, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and then we'll look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda, and we're going to have an additional item, item 8.1. Counselor Blackburn?
Yes, I've moved that council adopt the agenda with the addition of item 8.1. I'm sorry, I don't recall the...
Sure, thanks, Counselor Blackburn. I believe we're going to refer to that as AquaTerra USA amendments, unanimous shareholders' agreement amendments.
So moved.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as proposed? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries, and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting for any member of the public to come and address council on any community-related matter, as long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing. We do have dedicated time during public hearings, and I would recognize Mr. Jeff Johnson from AquaTerra Utilities. Sorry, Mr. Jeff Johnson, Mr. Jeff Piper. Welcome, gentlemen. So, gentlemen, if I imagine you're here with respect to item 8.1, if you would maybe want to give a little bit of a high-level overview of the proposed changes to the unanimous shareholders' agreement?
Sure. Basically, we're asking for a number of changes to the USA agreement for AquaTerra and its shareholders. This sets out the new shareholder classes to allow for additional shareholders to enter into the company. It also provides equal treatment for cash investments to create stock dividends, finalizing an issue that's happened in the past, loans to intercompany parties to allow those more freely without unanimous consent, and increase the amount of time to declare dividends. So the changes to the shareholder classes regards to Wembley coming on as the shareholder.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Piper. Any questions for our delegation? Counselor Bressi?
Mayor Given, I appreciate it, and thank you guys for coming in. I wanted to ask about section 3-03-01H, which is on page 11 of the Redline version of the USA, and what this does is it removes the requirement for unanimous consent from AquaTerra expanding its business operations in any geographical area municipality in which its business is not then being conducted on a fees-for-service basis. And I get the need for AquaTerra to expand out of its borders, to meet its mandate, to grow the business, to return revenue to us as the shareholders, but I'm just wondering if you could unpack a little bit why AquaTerra is hoping to remove unanimous consent from the need to do that. Gentlemen?
Really, this striking of this clause aligns our current practice with the USA. We do talk about generating revenues in that aspect, but what it doesn't, or what maybe hasn't been considered is, we're also asked to come in and step in to help municipalities outside a geographical area and on a contracted basis, Manning being one of them, Ryecroft and everybody, we've done that, Grand Cash. So this would limit that ability to do that from a operational assistance perspective, which is a critical basis for us to generate revenue to help and help our region. We have a social obligation to, because we have the expertise and the ability to help these municipalities. And again, it's something that we've demonstrated and proven over, you know, over the last 10 years. We've been working with Spirit River, Ryecroft, Heinz Creek, Manning, Grand Cash, Fairview, and we continue, and that's really our focus as well. So there is a balance between profits, and again, this ability to help when called on, and, you know, being involved in water, wastewater in Alberta, this is a sign of the times. This is going to happen more often than less because of increasingly stringent standards and the inability for these municipalities, especially in rural or northern areas, to recruit. So I want to, there is a focus for AquaTerra to generate revenue and to, again, to benefit the shareholders, but there is that socioeconomic, you know, perspective as well, and they're so interdependent, it's hard to, you can't separate them.
So, thank you, and I appreciate both growing the business, return revenues, I also really appreciate helping our neighbors. I love that we're a city that helps our neighbors, and I love that. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to how unanimous consent either hampers those, hampers our ability to do that, or how removing it could help us to help our neighbors and help our shareholders?
Yeah. So, in the event, a lot of times, again, on the operator assistance, it's very short notice. For us, under, without striking that clause, we would require to go to each council and get approval to work in that outside this geographical location. So we'll say a Manning, and really, there's just no time to, what this would force us to do is to contravene the USA, because honestly, I'm going to send operators to help these municipalities. And so functionally, we're forcing the corporation to violate the USA. And so by having it not struck, it does hamper our ability to do that. And again, we also, on the profit side or the generating the business side, we want to be able to seek out opportunities, and again, usually they're time-sensitive, right? So that does have that impact, because we potentially could be looking at weeks for unanimous consent, so.
Excellent. Thank you, that's very helpful, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Any other questions for the delegation? Seeing none, gentlemen, thanks very much for being here this evening, and we'll be discussing this, as you heard, under item 8.1. Was there anybody else that wished to come forward to address council on any community-related matter, again, as long as it wasn't the subject of a public hearing? I don't see anybody else coming forward, and so we will close the delegation portion of our agenda, just at the same time reminding the public that this opportunity does exist at every regular city council meeting. We'll move into item 6, public hearings, 6.1. I will call to order the public hearing with respect to bylaw C-1260-86, development decision timelines. I would look to administration for an introduction. Mr. Drosh?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The following is a proposed amendment to the land use bylaw to update the development timelines to meet the new MTA requirements. So over the past few years, Municipal Affairs has done a significant review of the Municipal Government Act and has enacted multiple changes, notably for this amendment, the development decision appeal timelines, and the timelines for deming an application complete. So the appeal timeline is the time after a development decision has been done that either an applicant or a member of the public can appeal the decision that the development authority has made. The previous timeline was 14 days. It has been increased to 21 days, so this amendment simply matches that in the land use bylaw. There will be little to no impact. It will delay development on approvals for an additional week because of that additional appeal timeline. However, it does offer impacted stakeholders more time to appeal decisions that affect them, so there is that benefit. The period for deming an application complete is when a development officer receives an application from a builder. They need to establish how long they will take before they determine that they have all the information that they need to make a decision. The Municipal Government Act proposes 20 days, but states that municipalities can create their own timelines as long as it's clearly included in their land use bylaw. We chose 30 days because we receive applications from time to time that are more complex and require more time. However, most of our applications are deemed complete within a 20-day period. We also included a clause to state that we, excuse me, that we reserve the right to request any additional information after the 30 days if that is needed to make a sound decision on an application. So there is no anticipated impact to the development process or the public. It will simply clarify our process in our land use bylaw. So in summary, the proposed amendment simply brings the land use bylaw into conformance with the new Municipal Government Act requirements, and there's little to no impact anticipated on the public and development. Administration's recommendation is that this bylaw be given all three readings. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Drosh. A brief opportunity for any questions council may have for administration at this point before we open it up for public presentations. Any questions for administration? Seeing none, we'll make sure that there is an opportunity at the end as well. Is there anyone who wished to speak to the proposed changes to bylaw C-1260? Is there anyone who wished to speak in favor or opposed to the proposed changes with respect to development decision timelines in the city's land use bylaw? I'm looking out over the crowd, and I don't see anybody stirring in their chairs, so I'll just ask one final time if there's anybody who wished to come forward with, make a presentation with respect to these proposed changes. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll just ask council one last time if they have desire to ask any questions of administration. Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to business arising. I would look for a motion for first reading, council. Counselor Minhaas?
(Counselling) I give the first reading to bylaw C-1260-86, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. So a motion for first reading. We don't have no discussion and debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Minhaas, would you like to do second reading, please?
(Counselling) I give the second reading to bylaw C-1260-86.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. On second reading, we're open for discussion and debate. Does any council members have any discussion or debate with respect to these proposed changes? Seeing none, I guess I'd just highlight that it's likely that over time we'll start to see more changes coming to a variety of different city bylaws as a result of the changes to the Municipal Government Act. The city will have a number of new, sorry, a number of policies and bylaw changes that we'll need to accommodate the new requirements under the act. So I wouldn't expect that this would be the last of these kind of things that we'll see. Seeing nobody else ringing in, I will call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Can we have a motion to have third and final reading?
I have a third reading, bylaw C-1260-86 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. So this is a motion to have third and final reading here this evening. In order to have all three readings of the bylaw pass at one council meeting, you have to have a specific motion enabling that, and the motion must pass unanimously. If it doesn't pass unanimously, it would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion and debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, so we can have third and final reading. Counselor Minhaas?
(Counselling) That council gave a third reading, reading to bylaw C-1260-86, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Once again, any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that handles all of our items under public hearings. We have no items of unfinished business, but we do have our additional item, item 8.1 under reports with respect to AquaTerra unanimous shareholders agreement. Council, I believe in our other agenda, we have a report from the city manager which recommends that council authorize the mayor to vote the city's shares in favor of AquaTerra's proposed actions to enable the parties other than the original shareholders to become AquaTerra shareholders, and so on, as continued in the report. Counselor Thiessen?
Yes, I can make that motion, and so I would move that city council authorize the mayor to vote the city's shares in favor of AquaTerra's proposed actions to enable parties other than the original shareholders to become AquaTerra shareholders.
Okay, thanks very much. And just to be, sorry, to be clear, I think there's also a second piece of business, approval from shareholders to allow AquaTerra to provide interim financing to the town of Wembley to enable the construction line, so, and maybe we can do those as separate motions. I think they're potentially distinct issues. So open for discussion, debate on the first. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given, I appreciate it. I'm going to be voting in opposition to this, and I hope some of you will join me in that. It is, I'm concerned that we're giving up a very significant power that we have right now as an original shareholder, and it's something that I think makes, I think that it makes sense in our current climate, in our current situation, but I'm really worried that it could put us in a precarious situation 20, 30, 40 years from now. I really appreciate the need for being nimble, especially in matters of dealing with emergency and dealing with getting safe water to municipalities that need it, and I do trust the intent of our current board of AquaTerra and our current executive leadership. I'm worried that 20, 30 years from now, our city council might not have the same confidence in AquaTerra leadership as we do, as we do right now. And at that time, I'm concerned if AquaTerra has the power to expand further and further and further without our council having a veto on that, right? I think that AquaTerra doesn't just exist to return valued shareholders, it also exists for the betterment of our entire region, which includes economic development. And right now, that's a very obvious thing, because it's just operating in our region, but if it gets too big pretty soon, there could, well, maybe not soon, but in a few decades, there could be times where what helps it expand this region might put a competing region an advantage over us, and that might be something we don't want 20 to 30 years from now. So this is a power that I don't think I'm comfortable with us giving up. I think that there are, I think we could be imaginative, I think there could be ways to give them the current flexibility they need without us forever saying we have no power to say how far AquaTerra is going to expand. So I'm going to be voting no in this, and I hope others will join me in voting no.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bressi. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to be voting in favor of the motion, excuse me. First of all, I do trust in the professionalism by which the amendments to the agreement were written. I also trust in the review that our council gave to the amendments before recommending, before our city administration recommended that we do vote in favor of this. In terms of the concerns that Counselor Bressi is expressing, I'm just not sure that we should be standing that much in the way of the progress and the nimbleness by which the management at AquaTerra can operate. And I really do think that if it ever comes to a time where the management is not being appropriate in the way that they manage the company, that the shareholders will deal with that in such a way that we don't need to be watching over the steps that they take in the meantime to grow and to be successful.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I too am going to support the motion, and for a couple reasons. One of the reasons being, as a member now for five years for the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance, one thing that we're trying to do across the Peace River region area, which will take us all the way up as high as high level in the Northwest Territories, is to create source water protection planning and give rural municipalities the opportunity to create a water inventory and also how to best manage their water resources. And a lot of that comes with education and sometimes with training, and I believe, like, regionally and especially in the North, AquaTerra is probably the best equipped to help train throughout the region, and if they are stalled at, you know, establishing contracts that maybe will train other water operators to form in the northern parts of the region and municipalities as well to create their own source water protection planning, I don't want to, I don't want to prohibit that sort of expansion. There's so much more that comes along with this, and I feel very, very, very comfortable that our city manager informed us when we talked about it at committee that our lawyers had vetted the contract, and they saw no ill will in it at all, and as Counselor Blackburn just said, if a future council had concerns about how that company was running, then they could always open the USA with the other shareholders and maybe put that clause back in if it, if they're getting a little too far out of their own scope. So saying all that, I'll support this.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also will support the motion. A couple, to address a couple of concerns that Counselor Bressi has, when the board for AquaTerra is put together, it also applies to the unanimous shareholders agreement, so the shareholders, the board members, rather, are approved by all the shareholders. At that point, if you had concerns about the capacity and the ability of the shareholders to make decisions that were in the best interest of the organization, there is an opportunity to address the capacity of those shareholder board members. And so I think that this truly, in support of your comments that you like to be nimble, this is such a small sort of piece of everything that comes back to the shareholders. I think that service contracts truly are just out there to get service in turn to make the organization more profitable, which in turn pays us dividends. I think that it's, I can appreciate your hesitation, but I think that having been a board member with AquaTerra and also now working with AquaTerra from the council perspective, I don't think you have as much to be concerned about as you do currently. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Platt?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess I have similar concerns to Counselor Bressi, but I'm just wanting to clarify, these are for service contracts, these are not for future purchases of additional businesses. So if it was a future business, if I'm understanding properly, council would have a chance to say yes or no to that?
Yeah, thanks very much, Counselor Platt. So the changes to the USA proposed to create a new, in addition to the change noticed by Counselor Bressi, the main sort of thrust of the changes to the USA are to create a new class of shareholders, and so the administration has sort of compared and contrasted the rights of the new shareholders versus the existing founding shareholders, the three municipalities, Sexsmith, the county, and the city. And those three would retain full approval authority over some very significant things, including director appointments, as Counselor Clayton referenced, approval of discretionary dividends, approval of USA bylaw and article changes for the corporation, approval of new shareholder municipalities joining the company, and finally, approval of acquisition of new companies. Those are all things that would still have to be approved by all three of the founding shareholder municipalities.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just wanted to maybe have some clarification for the potentially thousands of people that are watching this at home right now. So I would be in support with that, knowing that we still have the opportunity as council to say no to a future business investment that we don't feel maybe is alignment with what our region needs. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Platt. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will give one last thought on it. This is something that I've actually been going back and forth on a lot this weekend, and I have a sense that I'm going to get to experience the eight-to-one vote. I hope that's not the case, but I have a sense it might be coming up. I think, I think that a few of the concerns is, I would be very comfortable, say, I would be more comfortable if it was, I get the idea, especially that Counselor Thiessen is sharing of we're a region and we want to be able to help the region, and I really appreciate that, and if we had something, like we were putting up a geofence, and it could do, and it could expand as much as it wants in this region, but we're going to talk if it goes out of those borders, I'd be very, very comfortable with something like that, but I think just with no limits on where, on where or how it can expand business, that's where I get uncomfortable, especially I've heard very clearly from a lot of our constituents that they're concerned about AquaTerra, about AquaTerra's, about the vision, and I don't think it's completely accurate, but there's a perception out there that AquaTerra is working very aggressively to grow, and that's not what I'm hearing people want with this company that we hear. I'm also concerned, I really get why we need to update this USA to let Wembley come in and create other shareholders, but I'm concerned about this clause that I don't see having anything to do with the purported intent of this, of these amendments. I don't see how this helps us bring in Wembley, bring in Wembley, bring in new shareholders, which is what this agreement wants, and all of a sudden, we're giving up this very significant leverage of power, and it's just a little clause that's in there that we haven't, that probably nobody in the public's noticed. We definitely haven't discussed with them, and I'm concerned about us, about that change has kind of been in here with it when we haven't properly talked about, we haven't even really talked about it really as a council. We had one committee meeting a week ago, and this is the first we've ever really discussed this clause. So I'm not comfortable with the process, and it's one of those things, I'm going back and forth on whether I can support this or not. But the other day, I'm not comfortable with the process, and I'm not comfortable with some of the perceptions, and once again, I don't think they're all accurate that people have of AquaTerra, so for that reason, I'm going to be voting no still, and I'll join the club.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Counselor Platt?
It's tough to get eight-one votes, so I'm actually going to switch, because I kind of want to stick with me only getting that, but more, just because I think, I agree with Counselor Bressi on this. I was a little bit, I guess, disappointed that we brought this a couple weeks ago, and it's like an urgent decision we have to make, and I do feel as a council, we have an obligation to do some things with AquaTerra's agreement that I feel would be for the betterment of the city, and I don't like that we're just giving up our card here, and so I will be supporting Counselor Bressi's motion.
So to be clear, Counselor Blackburn has made the motion. Counselor Bressi was just speaking against it. So we will go to, I see Counselor Blackburn, I would go to him to close unless there's anything else substantive arising. Oh, was it, oh, sorry, sorry, thank you, thank you, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanted to clarify one point that might assist Counselor Bressi. The term unanimous consent has been changed in the definitions, in the way that the agreement is being amended, and so with a change in the definition, perhaps the section that Counselor Bressi is concerned about also needed to be changed because, because the term means something different than it used to mean, and I just don't see it being as inappropriate as is being suggested.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Since the agenda's light, I will have one last comment, because I think there's a couple items here that Counselor Bressi may be mistaken on. First of all, the direction of AquaTerra will not change based on this one change in the USA. The business plan is still approved by the shareholders. The board members are approved by the shareholders. In turn, there's opportunities for the shareholders to talk with AquaTerra on a regular basis and be in tune with their priorities. There's nothing in this service contract that is going to change the direction of need for AquaTerra. This truly is just addressing service contracts, and it's not like all of a sudden they're going to say, we're not going to approve a service contract for garbage pickup, because the mandate of AquaTerra is still waste management. This is not going to change AquaTerra, and it's simply something that regardless of the outcome of this vote, I don't think you have majority, and Counselor Platt can be a great guy and support you for that reason, but however, this is not going to change anything, and it's only going to make the process more efficient. So, thank you.
Hey, thanks, Counselor Clayton. I'll just say that I'll also be voting in support of the motion. As has been referenced before, I think ultimately, if there was a substantive systemic ongoing major issue that any one of the three original shareholders had with the operations of AquaTerra, the hammer that we have is we don't appoint anybody to their board and effectively hold the board to account by saying, you don't get to serve on our board if you're not listening to us. And that's the authority that we have as shareholders, and we hold that authority with the other two municipalities. So it is a bit complicated, because there could be a situation where one municipality disagrees with the others, but that's the nature of being in a regional operation, is you have to work it out. you have to work it out collectively. But ultimately, in terms of a corporate relationship where we are a shareholder of a corporation, we have input into the business plan, as has been referenced, but ultimately if we, we really, truly fundamentally disagree with the direction of the corporation and our other original shareholders agree with us, then we show that displeasure by voting out the board, because we have that full authority and will continue to retain that full authority, sort of the nuclear option if you wanted to think of it that way. But council has always had that ability and will continue under the proposed changes. So I'd agree that this is maybe not as significant a change as, as it might read. And practically speaking, Aqua Terra today does provide a range of services to municipalities across our region from Manning to Hinton, and I certainly am supportive of that. And ultimately, the operations of the utility bring back money to taxpayers in the city of Grand Prairie. Every year Aqua Terra returns dividends that mean that our property taxes are anywhere from one to one and a half percent lower than they would be if we didn't own the utility. And at least some of those profits come from revenue that's generated outside of the three original shareholders. So I'm fully in support of the changes, and I just, I can appreciate reading that in isolation without necessarily seeing all of the practice of the utility and the relationship between the shareholders, it may appear to be something that it's not. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote on councillor Thieson's motion. Thanks very much council for correcting me. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and I believe we have, I believe we have one more motion following up specifically with respect to shareholder approval for interim financing for the Wembley Waterline, councillor Thieson.
All right, I would move that as a part of that vote for the mayor, that city council authorized the mayor to vote the city shares so that Aqua Terra may advance interim financing to the town of Wembley to enable construction and commissioning of a water transmission line to their community.
Thanks very much councillor Thieson, councillor Bressy.
Mayor Given, just in light of my opposition to the past motion, I wanted to not just vote yes to this, but express my enthusiastic yes, and I'm very happy to be bringing Wembley in.
Thanks very much councillor Bressy. Well, and it's important that each council member vote their heart on each issue that comes forward, absolutely. And just in terms of process, you know, the motions here tonight are basically telling me what to do as a shareholder. The process with Aqua Terra is that the, the mayor, the Reeve and the mayor of the town of Sexsmith vote each of their respective municipality shares in support of or in opposition to things that come forward. And so with these motions, council's telling me how to vote the city's shares. It's a bit of a weird process, but just to clarify that for any of the hundreds of people that might be watching. Oh, thousands, sorry, yeah, right. Okay, any other discussion or debate on, on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, I believe that handles all of our business related item eight point one. And so we'll move into our committee business, starting with item nine point one, Community Living Committee from January sixteenth, councillor Thieson.
Yeah, I would move that council approve the Community Living Committee minutes from January sixteenth.
Thanks very much councillor Thieson, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I hope you guys like hearing me talk, I know I do. And so I will. I could break this up into six, I'm just going to read it as one big long motion, so get your pens ready, and if you have a question about any of them, please mark it down and we can get to Q and A after. In saying that, I would move that council allocate funds for the 2017 Park Improvement Grant Program as follows. One, Cobblestone and Riverstone Neighborhood Association and the amount of $2,000 to be applied toward the supply and installation of two bike racks for the following two parks, Clifford Hook Park and Terry Watcher Park. Two, a Cole St Gerard School Playground Committee and the amount of $2,000 to be applied toward the playground enhancement project. Three, Highland Park Neighborhood Association and the amount of $2,486 to be applied toward the supply and installation of two park benches and three concrete paths. Four, Hillside Neighborhood Association and the amount of $2,500 to be applied toward the supply and installation of 20 fruit trees and fruit bushes. Five, Royal Oaks Neighborhood Association and the amount of $13,514 to be applied toward the supply and installation of an LED light and pole for the outdoor rink at John Edwards, aka Jack Soars Park. And finally, six, Signalshire Falls Neighborhood Association and the amount of $2,500 to be applied toward the supply and installation of multi-use, multi-season play surface Phase One B. And speaking to this motion, this is a fund that was set aside in our 2015 to 2018 budget planning, $25,000 to the Parks Improvement Grant Program, which is available to members of the community who are attached to a neighborhood association, not-for-profit business or otherwise that meets the criteria.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Thieson, any discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Friesen.
Thank you, just a quick question councillor Thieson, so is this the entire $25,000 that is annually all in one lump?
I believe so, yes.
All right, thank you, that's all.
Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Thieson, anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
No, actually, that was pretty much all we did that day. We were in and out in about 10 minutes, and yeah, then we got our noses into other city business around city hall, but that had nothing to do with the Community Living Committee, thank you.
Great, thanks very much councillor Thieson. Move on to item nine point two, the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting, councillor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given, I would move that council accept the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, January 23rd, as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Is or Ts that need to be dotted or crossed as appropriate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given, I would move that, I apologize, that council approve or council endorse the concept, I'm going to do this as one motion, and I'll explain a little bit on it, but that council endorse the concept of an extended producers' responsibility program and direct the mayor to write a letter of support to Calgary Mayor Nahid Nenshi, confirming the city of Grand Prairie's support for the city of Calgary's AUMA resolution for the government of Alberta to establish an extended producers' responsibility policy and program approach in Alberta. And in essence, what this policy does that the city of Calgary has brought forward is take some of the costs off the municipalities and puts it on the producers, and it encourages the producers to produce in a more economically friendly way, environmentally friendly way, and it's sort of, if, if supported, would alleviate a lot more overhead costs to municipalities.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Clayton. Any discussion or debate with respect to the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries councillor Clayton, anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yeah, just briefly, the, the transportation master plan, there was an update there. The RFP had gone out in regards to putting the master plan into, into action, and in turn, there was a public consultation, the first of a few on January 25th. And as well, we had an opportunity to sort of discuss a little bit of timelines on that, and we'll hear more on that coming down the road. And as well, we received some correspondence in regards to the request from the Catholic School Board for a light, street light, traffic lights at 108 and 132nd Avenue, and we will be getting more information from administration back on that shortly.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Clayton. I think that handles all of our committee business for this evening, and so we do have one item of correspondence that came to this, council agenda rather than a committee one, and I think that's because there is a timeline referenced in the request. Council will see a letter of request with respect to the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association, and would just highlight that this organization started in 2010, has a number of other municipalities that are members, 11 in fact, Plamondon, the municipal district of Lacklavish, Beaumont, Legale, Mornville, St Albert, St Paul, Bonneville, Flair, MD of Smoky River and Donnelly. And there is a, essentially a request in the last paragraph, inquiring whether the city of Grand Prairie is interested in becoming a member. This probably comes as a result of the fact that the city of Grand Prairie is a member of the Francophone and Francophile Cities of North America Network. We made that decision a couple of years ago, I guess. And so there's a similar sort of group of municipalities in Alberta that are inquiring whether we would like to seek membership in that or participate in that organization. So it's here for council's direction. In terms of the range of options, we could likely ask administration to look into it, we could send it to a committee to discuss it, we could direct the mayor to write a response in the affirmative, we could also write a letter, direct the mayor to write a letter requesting more information. I would just note that they mentioned that their next meeting will be February 9th. I don't know that there's any urgency necessarily to hitting that, but if there is some level of interest, I think starting the dialogue about what the requirements of members would be, and obligations such as meeting schedule, costs, those sort of things, and we could probably either do that administratively, or we could do it through letter from the mayor, whatever council's wish is. Councillor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Last council had a good discussion in regards to where we saw our role in regards to Canadian municipalities, and I think that obviously, in my opinion, the Alberta Bilingual Municipalities Association is a good opportunity for us to be in discussion with like-minded Alberta communities that have a heavy presence in bilingual, bilingual people in their communities. I think that this is a good opportunity for us to strengthen relationships across the province, and if nothing else, get people talking about the strengths of communities that are diverse. So I think I suggest that I'll make a motion that council, that this letter go to the appropriate standing committee to come back to committee with more information in regards to the next steps.
Maybe, maybe we could just move the council direct administration, bring back more information to the appropriate standing committee? So basically start that dialogue at an administrative level. Thanks very much councillor Clayton, councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, I would support that most dearly. The population of our Francophone community in Grand Prairie is roughly about 10% of our population, so that's about 7,000 people. Francophone is the first language that they learn, and English the second, and I think we need to support that. In the past, council, we've supported going and making our community Francophone friendly, so I think this would be the, the ideal thing to go for. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, I think that handles all of our correspondence business, and of course, our delegation business was with respect to the Aqua Terra unanimous shareholders agreement, so I believe that that was handled. I don't think we have any notices of motion this evening, so that'll take us to council member reports, and we'll start with the Combative Sports Commission, councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. We have a, we had a meeting last month, and what we come up with was a review of the event that was held on December 15th, Festival of Fist II. We, yeah, I know, I don't name these things, guys, so don't be looking at me like I'm just the middleman here, okay? The event was well done, we've had a couple of concerns with our paperwork, we needed to update it for the medical professionals that were there. Things have changed in Alberta Health Services and just a transfer of medical aid from the event to the hospital. Couple items that we'll be coming back to committee with is some bylaws pertaining to medicals, as well as some costs that we want to change in our scheduling. I'll just touch on a couple, the amateur title bouts and judges and amateur bouts. So we're just going to change those fees to make them similar to the ones in the rest of the province. Once again, we're going to come back with some medical requirements. One of those is the hepatitis B surface antigen, and also the dilated ophthalmic examination. And we're going to propose the minimum age from 18 to 16 to compete in amateur MMA. And so that will be taking place here as soon as we can get on to the agenda. Darren Cliff, the promoter renewed his license, and he set up for another event in Evergreen Park. Once again, the name of the event will be called Brawls Deep, and that will be March, hey, just remember that I had nothing to do with this. I just make sure everything is done safely and legally. March 16th, 2018. And it'll be down at Evergreen Park. And we are going to have a individual coming up from Winnipeg to go through a judging clinic, for our local commission and the staff that work with us. His name is Jaren Valen, and he will be doing a refresher course for those individuals. And with that, to give you some idea what this guy's credentials are, there's a fellow, his name is Big John McCarthy, he'd be basically the go-to guy in the United States, and Jaren Valen, Valet is his partner. So we're getting the best of the best to come up here. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. We'll move on to Disabled Transportation Society, councillor Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Disabled Transport Society met on the 18th of January, and they're working very hard to get through some management changes, and the staff who voted to move toward unionization, so that brings some complexities for the organization. So the board voted the other day to have the, have some of the administrative, administrative burden of the organization managed in the interim by the Volunteer Services Bureau, which I think is a good move, it's nice to see organizations working together like that to help each other out in Grand Prairie. They've also engaged a, an individual to help them with the negotiation with the, with the union, and they are also seeking a legal counsel. They are hoping to find some pro bono legal counsel related to, to the developments. So they're working really hard to maintain the service to their ridership, the primary, or the, the top tier of how important it is for rides to be provided is for medical appointments, of course, and then the second being employment and school, and the third being social. So sometimes social takes a bit of a hit at the expense of meeting the other needs, but they are working very hard to get all three tiers of ridership managed as they work through this, this time. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Friesen, councillor Plott, I think you had Downtown Association.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yes, I attended a Downtown Association Members Affairs meeting as well as our, the monthly board meeting. Most of the conversation was around Phase Three and the procurement and communication that's going to happen with Phase Three. I think there's some, a little bit more confidence, I felt, around the table that we're moving in the right direction with both those areas, and so it's something we'll continue to work on with our group. I do want to mention they have an event coming up, not as fun a name as Mr. O'Toole's events maybe, but they have an AGM coming up on February 28th at ADM at the Legion. Unfortunately, that's when council's in strategic planning, but I do urge all, anybody that can, can attend that to try to attend the meeting on behalf of the downtown businesses.
Thanks very much councillor Plott. Councillor Blackburn, I believe you had Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association. And you'll just have to get your microphone.
Sorry about that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. This was my first meeting with the Regional Tourism Association and I must say that it's, it's a complicated endeavor that involves the association and Travel Alberta. And the biggest challenge that we're facing is in this upcoming budget for 2018. Given the operating revenues that we have and our typical operating expenses, it's possible that we're going to have to operate with a deficit budget in 2018 and that things could be even worse in, in coming years. There seems to be quite a reduction in the amount of support that comes from Travel Alberta. And we're also in a situation where the funding that comes from the municipality, the municipalities, sorry, in plural, that support the association is that they're supported in a per capita formula that is, has become the last, we're the last organization that is supported in a per capita basis. Most other communities such as Red Deer, Lethbridge, Fort McMurray and others are supporting the regional tourism associations through a different formula that provides the association with much more in the way of financial resource than, than we're doing. So in the interim, the association has written letters to the municipalities asking for the first increase in the per capita amount that we support the association by in the past 15 years or more. And secondly, they're looking at requesting that we look at a different structure for supporting the association. And I believe that they will be coming forward probably to the appropriate standing committee at some time to propose a change in the type of funding. The reason that I raise it here today is because I think it's something that we ought to anticipate when we get into our strategic planning.
Thanks very much Counselor Blackburn. And did you also have Grand Spirit Foundation?
I did. Grand Spirits Foundation Management Board met this past week and we had a special meeting with the management board for the Hythe Pioneer Home. There is an arrangement between Hythe Pioneer Home and Grand Spirit Foundation to, for us to support them in a variety of ways when they may need that support. And so we wanted to get a better sense of their current operation and what their, what their budget forecasting was looking like because they were concerned that they were going to have a shortfall, that they were going to ask municipalities attached to Grand Spirit Foundation to, to support through a requisition. And the Grand Spirit Board has made the decision that, that we would not support the idea of providing them funds through a requisition to our members. So it's an issue that has come and gone for us, but I know that the, the Hythe Board is going to be having to look at some other alternatives and I believe that they'll probably be going to the province for some assistance in working out a better way for, for funding for that organization. Another thing that's happened with the Grand Spirit Foundation is that we've been approached by Alberta Health Services because they're desperately in need of spaces where they can look after seniors who are dealing with the effects of dementia and other debilitating challenges that require greater care than we get from seniors homes and lodges. And they have a number of beds that, that they would fill as, as soon as we could provide them. We're still looking at whether or not such a thing is going to be possible, but I raise it here because there's a possibility that the land that we are looking at in Smith might be the location for a future project that might support Alberta Health Services concern in this area. And I can also mention that a project is now underway for a new facility in Spirit River and that the Grand Spirit Foundation will be managing the, the project to get that constructed. That's all I have for this time.
Thanks very much Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Clayton, I think you had Nighthawk Recreation Area Board.
Thank you Mayor Given. Just a couple of quick things from Nighthawk. At the last board meeting, it was, the board was advised that 15 successful athletes that train at the Nighthawk Ski Hill will be attending the Alberta Winter Games this year. So that was great news as well as four Nighthawk athletes will be attending the Arctic Winter Games. So a great, great turnout from the, the youth that is training at that hill as well. If you haven't been out to the hill, they have great snow. I was there yesterday and I really encourage people to get out there this year, whether it's tubing or even just going out there for brunch. The skiing is excellent and although it seems a little cold when you're out there, it's not as cold as it is when you're running from your car to your house. So I encourage people to get out there. Thanks.
Thanks very much Counselor Clayton. And Counselor Plot, I believe you had South Peace Regional Archives Society.
Thanks Mayor Given. Yes, we had a meeting here last week and there was, they actually had out some facts back cards. So interesting enough, there was some, some stats I just wanted to give you guys on that. There was the first archive put in this collection was from 1820, so almost 200 years ago, which I thought was kind of interesting. They have 8,938 clippings and personal and family ties in the area. And they also have 50 hours of plus hours of Indigenous oral history reserved. So I thought that was kind of cool or preserved. They are going to also be having an AGM on March 25th, or sorry, March 24th at 10:00 AM at the museum. Currently they have 1,690 square feet and they're just in the process of looking at some further lease space. So they have a couple in mind and they will be looking at adding about 500 square feet of lease space just because they're literally bursting at the seams there. So on that note, in 2016, 17, they kind of held a line on their budget of, of funding that the city would give them. They will be coming and asking for further funds to see if we can help them out with, with this expansion. So it's something we'll have to kind of be ready for.
Thanks very much Counselor Plot. Counsel, this is, I'm going to call my own number here a couple of times. First, the ICF Negotiating and Steering Committee. Couple council members, Counselor Friesen and Counselor Clayton will know that the significant portion of the workaround Phase One is complete. Our consultants, Stan Tech, have provided a final report. We're going to get that circulated all of council in advance of the Steering Committee getting together again to review it February 23rd, I believe. So council members will get a chance to see that sort of first round of work and potentially give those of us on the Steering Committee some, some direction in terms of our council's view of it. And ultimately, the next step is Phase Two in our work with the town, the towns of Sexmouth, Wembley and Horse Lake First Nation to decide if there is some desire to move forward with developing a potential regional ICF, intermunicipal collaboration framework. And so council just wanted to give you a heads up to watch your email inbox. I'm sure Mr. Ollinger shortly will be sending out that draft of the Phase One work, which really works to identify the service interconnections between the municipalities in our region as, as we could best interpret them from the participating partners. So I think it's a pretty interesting piece of work and I'm sure council will be eager to check it out when it comes into your inboxes, but I just wanted to give you that heads up that that Phase One is complete and we're moving on to Phase Two. Also, I wanted to report to council on the AUMA, Alberta Urban Municipalities Association. I had a board meeting last week where we reviewed a number, a variety of items and I just thought I'd give some highlights. So the board has struck an HR committee to deal with the CEO recruitment. The previous CEO, Subahai Chuk, is no longer there. Dan Root is the interim CEO of AUMA. And so they have engaged a recruiter and they're going through and recruiting for that position and will be over the next little while. The board also discussed the AUMA's position with respect to cannabis tax revenue sharing between the province and municipalities. AUMA, as I'm finding, is often works very hard to ensure that they're in alignment with the two metro areas, Edmonton and Calgary, the two large cities. In this case, it appears that both Edmonton and Calgary are still developing their positions and at the board, we've felt it was important for our AUMA to be advocating on behalf of members. At the federal level, the federal government made clear that they're going to dedicate 75% of the tax revenue to the provinces. And so, and the premier, or sorry, the prime minister was very clear that the intent there is, as he saw it, to support municipalities, which will bear the significant burden of the majority of costs associated with this change. So AUMA board is working on that basis and will be putting forward a position to the government and that will come out through, through regular channels as members will see that. The board also discussed the provincial budget. Council members will remember back at the AUMA convention last fall, we were already starting to get some signals that this provincial budget might be a change budget with respect to municipalities. And so the board discussed the implications of that and how we might best support members. And then finally, the board reviewed a suite of, of tools related to intermunicipal collaboration frameworks. AUMA received a grant from the province to work with AAMDNC, the Rural Municipalities Association, to develop a range of tools that would assist municipalities in starting to assess how they approach ICFs. And so the board reviewed those tools, provided some feedback and input to the consultants who are Stan Tech, who are also doing our work, but provided some input into that and those tools will be launched out to AUMA members fairly shortly because I know that there are small municipalities in particular across the province who may not have started as early as the City of Grand Prairie did with our partners, who are a bit wary about the amount of work that's going to come down the line with having to develop intermunicipal development plans wherever they weren't required before and ICFs, intermunicipal collaboration frameworks. And so the AUMA board was working on the tools and workbook to support our members in that. So just wanted to report some of the highlights of what the AUMA board was up to and we'll move into council member roundtable and we'll start with Counselor Thiessen.
All right, Don. I only circled two things. I wanted to talk about everything, but I figured I'd be last in the queue. I'll just talk about those two things. First things first, January 25th, council and, and the Chamber of Commerce sat down for, for lunch discussion over a variety of topics that impact the city and the chamber and the region largely. Just a quick comment, most council was in attendance. The mayor was obviously away on business, but Counselor Clayton stepped in with our city manager, Bob Nicolay, and, and did a very fine job as deputy mayor. In fact, it was commented to me by Counselor Plot afterwards. He said, "You were so quiet in this meeting. I thought you'd talk more." And I said, "I was in awe." No, wait, I was in awe of how much of a boss Jackie Clayton is, not only as a chair, but as deputy mayor. She held her own and she was very knowledgeable, not to, not to insinuate that she's, I never thought she wasn't knowledgeable, but she definitely, yeah, it took me five years to finally realize how great you are and had a good job over there. You represented the city very finely. Also, this week I attended the Stars Hangar Dance. I'll speak to this because it was a sold out event. I was in attendance with Counselor Minhas and his wife, Sheminder. There was an incredible event and just to speak to maybe how the economy is doing or the support that Stars has through the industrial agreements that they have, there's this new trend starting where they bid for first rights to the food trough. And so everyone will auction off, they'll get a live auction going and people bid on it, bid on it. And it started out really bad and went down to $200 from a thousand before someone started auctioning on it. But by the time the auction was over, first right to the food trough cost somebody $5,400. So that all went to Stars and it was an excellent event. I was happy to be able to share the company at the table with the Minhas's and the other people in attendance and I'll leave the rest to my council cohorts because I know I saw them in a lot of places.
Thanks very much Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you Mayor Given. One of the things that I forgot to mention when I was reporting on GP Tourism is the fact that the association is the sponsor for one of the speakers at Growing the North. A gentleman by the name of Chris Fields, who's a motivational speaker and specializes in marketing and economic development in, in communities, is going to be speaking on the five ways to create the exceptional, having to do with community marketing. So if people are considering going to Growing the North, that'll be one of the excellent speakers involved. The only other thing I'll mention for the time being is that I went a couple of weeks ago to the Crime Prevention Safe Growth Workshop presentations. Extremely well done. This was, this was a program where I believe it was mostly city employees took part over a period of weeks to learn about dealing with crime prevention through design, whether it be land use or, or physical design properties that would help to reduce the potential for crime. They took three teams, looking at three very specific locations in Grand Prairie and talking about the kinds of things that might be downfalls in the area of crime prevention and what could be done about them. They did a tremendous job and their presentations were easily understood and very clear for those of us that were in attendance. And I think it was well worthwhile, not only for me to go and see this, but for them to have taken this, this workshop.
Thanks very much Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Plot?
Thanks Mayor Given. I guess I just want to start off with, I feel bad for Counselor Brassley that he, he got his eight one. I was going to vote with you, but then when Counselor Clayton said I was going to be a nice guy, it changed my opinion on it. So I, just to clarify that, I had a really eventful last two weeks. A couple of events that, that stuck out were our council meetings with, with Chamber and UDI. These are two organizations that I've sat on the other side for those meetings for many years. So it was kind of interesting to be on the other side of the table as a council member and looking across at your peers with a different lens. This last week, I got to bring greetings on behalf of the city. So the first time I've had a chance to public speak, which was different, but we did some volunteer awards. I just want to recognize that this year, the Bills, Bill Bowser Volunteer Organization of the Year went to the Technical Search and Rescue and at the George Repka Awards was given to two people, Mr. Bill Corcoran and Mr. Ken O'Shea. Both, all great, worthy, worthy people to get the awards. The, the highlight of my last couple of weeks though is I had an opportunity and I know a few council members have done this, but I finally had the opportunity to do a blanket exercise. So for the people in the room that haven't done that yet, I was surprised with, with what I got out of it and I would definitely encourage and recommend anybody that hasn't done it yet to, to participate in that.
Thanks very much Counselor Plot and Counselor Friesen.
Thank you Mayor Given. The highlight of my week was, I know many of you, probably most of you did this as well, but reading for Literacy Week, reading to students around the city. And that was just such a blast because that's something I deeply enjoy and have loved all my life and greatly enjoy sharing that enthusiasm over a new book with children. So I got to read to grade two students at Mother Teresa School. The other thing that I went to that I, I didn't see anyone else at and it was a bit of an obscure thing, but it was something that our city supports through community and social development and that was our Grand Prairie Hospice Palliative Care Society Community Care Launch. Our hospice palliative care society has focused very much on the wellbeing and the, the last days of individuals who of course are, are facing imminent death. And while that's very important, they've recognized also the importance of meeting the needs of those who care give for those individuals. So this community care launch was specifically for caregivers of individuals in palliative care. So we spent some time with Christine Ailing, talking about the Virtues Project. And we also are looking forward in March to a former Grand Prairie resident coming and doing some workshops on writing and how writing can relieve grief and stress and those kinds of things. So that was just a wonderful thing that community and social development was able to fund through, through city finances. So thank you.
Thanks very much Counselor Friesen. Counselor Minhas?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think most of it's been spoken, but the Chamber Membership Gala was pretty nice and we went to on Saturday night and that was a great thing done. Lots of people mingle dangle. I think Wade was there too. He forgot to say that, but we had a good time and it's nice to meet the new member of the chamber. Like Wade said, a- Like Wade said earlier, you know, I said most of the Chamberside a lot of time, but when you go from the city is different. So that's one. And then other one, small thing, but they're not important. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Minhas. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Most of the items have been mentioned. I will say congratulations to Chris Sepola-Pasada, who was officially celebrated as the current Chamber of Commerce President. And she would now be the fifth female in over 100 years of the Grand Prairie Chamber history to be Chair of the Board. So congratulations to her. I also had an opportunity to bring greetings on behalf of the mayor and council at the Provincial Agricultural Service Board Conference. It was, it was, you know, it's always great to get together with with your rural partners and and have different discussions that you're not used to. So I, although I didn't attend the conference, in the brief time I was there, learnt some interesting, interesting thoughts on weed removal and things that, you know, are typically things that we don't discuss to the level of talking about, you know, worrying about foxes and how you're maintaining wildlife, et cetera. So it was interesting as well. I enjoyed the meeting with UDI. It was a great discussion. And I also represented council and mayor as the emcee at the Grand Prairie, City of Grand Prairie Volunteer Appreciation Night, which was which was fun. And the last piece, I think, that I wanted to recognize was as Mayor says, said and council said last term, we're always willing open door policy to meet with any potential people who are running for leaders in any provincial party. So council had an opportunity to meet with Stephen Mandell last week. And I think that wraps it up. Thanks.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just want to touch on, I've done a number of events with the other individuals that are in the room here. But I did go to Family Literacy Day, Literacy Day at the Parent Link Center on on Saturday morning. And it's great to see the all the agencies and the programs that they've got in place. And once again, I I did come to the meeting with Stephen Mandell. When we had our little discussion, he was a gentleman that has been mayor for the City of Edmonton for a number of years, was an MLA. And he could basically understand our concerns that we have in this region on a number of different aspects. So it was great to be able to, I guess, run some stuff off of him and have his input as well. So. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Counselor Bressley.
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. First of all, I want to clarify with Counsel Plot. I thought you letting me earn my way to the club was a nice guy thing to do. So thank you. January, for the third year in a row, I've spent a lot of time trying. My tradition in January is to focus on getting as many lunch meetings as I can to connect with people in the community and learn what's going on. And Counselor O'Toole suggested that I call this year Dills Phil Three. You spend a lot of time with combative sports, guys. I've also arranged a number of community tours throughout the week, just trying to see some facilities and organizations that are doing important work in our community. And two of those that I want to highlight was I spent an afternoon at HIV North and I got invited to an impromptu staff meeting. And there was a lot of conversation at that staff meeting about how to stretch some very sparse professional development dollars, especially in terms of giving their staff some training on how to be safe in the situations they go into. And they weren't the first organization I've heard having a conversation like that. And a lot of these organizations are doing important work for our city. And I expect that we might be getting some funny requests from some of them for professional development. And I hope we're very, very open to that when we do get those requests. If we don't get those requests, I wonder if we should be putting the bug in their ear that we'd like to partner with them and that. I want our important workers to be safe. On a lighter note, another tour I did was I went to the Centre for Creative Arts. I'd never really been there before and it was fun learning about all the programs. I was surprised that 5,000 people come through a year and 1,000 of those are through Healing Arts Programs, which was really great. And an offer the council received from the executive director, Candace Hook, is she said, "If we want a bonding activity, she will teach us a pottery class." So I think we should take her up on that. It'd be fun to do together and it'd be great for those of us who are like me that don't know a lot about the center to learn more. So we really need to do some clay pot making or whatever, some bicycling that wheel around together. I have no idea what we make, but we should do it together. It'd be fun.
Thanks very much, Counsel Bressley. And for people of a certain age, that makes you think of the movie Ghost. And it makes me think that I probably won't be doing any clay pot making with you, Counselor Bressley.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. I was thinking the same thought.
I know. Everybody, everybody thought it. So I'll just report on a couple of meetings that I had with individuals, organizations in the community. I met with a engineering firm and their client who is proposing to do some development in the city's recently annexed area to the west about some perceived barriers that the organization will have to deal with in due course. I also had an opportunity to host here at City Hall, a opioid task force meeting. Council will see that on tomorrow's committee agenda, there's a report on some of the activities. And so that's an opportunity to regularize that operation into the city's business and give council a bit more of an update about what's been going on there. And that comes as a recommendation from that group. I also had an opportunity to meet with Monica Curtis, who is the CEO of Energy Efficiency Alberta. She you may have seen in the news that she was in the community doing a bit of outreach. And so the city manager and I had a chance to sit down with her and talk about some of the City of Grand Prairie's activities to date and give some sense of things that could be helpful to us and to our community as they develop their operations. And then I also had a chance to host Mr. Bill Hardy here at in the mayor's office and invite him down to council chambers. Mr. Hardy is an adult with developmental disabilities and he's very interested in politics. And so he wanted to come in. And I have to say that he was very knowledgeable about the things that are going on, both locally and internationally, and enjoyed hosting him here at City Hall. And other than that, I think that all of the other events, oh, and this morning, the acting city manager and and I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Dan Piercy and Chris Sepola from the Chamber of Commerce. They have an annual practice of the chair and the CEO meeting with the mayor and city manager. And so they did their annual trip and significant focus around transportation and transportation infrastructure, mostly provincial, I would say. And there's also a high degree of interest about provincial, sorry, transportation in the in the region between municipalities. And so council members probably would have heard some of that at the at the meeting. I also just want to extend my thanks to the council members that stepped in and provided greetings and and other functions on my behalf, certainly while I was away at AUMA, but in other circumstances as well. Certainly appreciate everybody stepping up and doing that. Thanks so much, everybody, and we'll call our meeting adjourned.